Would like to call this meeting of the Narragansett Regional School District School Committee to order. Would everyone please rise for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
As a reminder, this meeting is being live streamed and recorded to YouTube and to Facebook and will be available following the meeting itself. We will get started with approval of the meeting minutes of March twentieth, twenty twenty five, so entertain a motion to approve the meetings for that date.
So moved.
Motion by Sean.
Second.
Second by Heather. Any questions or comments about those minutes? Seeing none, all in favor?
I oppose.
Abstained, and I say yes, so that is unanimous. We also have bills in payroll this evening, and I would recommend a motion to accept those bills in payroll warrants as presented.
So moved.
Motion by Sean.
Second.
Second by Heather. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
I oppose.
Abstained, and I say yes, so that is unanimous. And we have our student rep here tonight, coming fresh off of the High School and Middle School Musical, so can't wait to hear what you have to share with us.
Um, so I made a slide your presentation because we had a lot of pictures from some of the events that we had this month. Um, to start, we had the Little Roman Musical, and there was our spring production, which was a huge success. Um, the performances were outstanding and the production above many dedicated students. The audience's response was overwhelming and very positive. And we're incredibly, incredibly proud of who we had and made like the show possible. Um, on the next slide, we have the math state, uh, the math competition at Pittsburgh State. Um, it was last Friday, and nearly forty students from grades ten through twelve went to Pittsburgh State University to compete in the math competition, which happens annually. Um, the event, like, competition lasted an hour and a half, uh, and it included some very challenging math problems from geometry, Algebra One and Algebra Two. Um, this opportunity was organized by the Math Honor Society and Ms. Richard, and we were so proud of all the students that, uh, decided to take on the challenge. There was also the, uh, art and band concert that happened, I think it was either Monday or last week. Um, the, both of the events were well received and the showcase and showcased the amazing talent and creativity of our students. And congratulations to everyone who participated in that. We also yesterday had a college signing ceremony, which was so amazing. I experienced it and also Colin Smith. We decided to commit to Nichols College and I'll be playing field hockey, and Colin will go to Dean College and play football. Um, we also were interviewed by the Gardner News, and we're so grateful for the school for putting together this memorable event. Um, I also got to go to Student Government Day at the State House, um, la, April fourth, yeah, and I was driven to Boston by Mr. Supple and Ms., Ms. Romellard. Um, I'm so thankful that they were able to drive me out there on such short notice. Um, and during the event, I got to sit through a mock senate debate, and we debated the upcoming bill that's being presented on whether or not schools should allow phones in school. Um, the students obviously decided to keep phones, but that's just, I feel like, a given as students, we want our phones, but there were some very good discussions going on, and we got to sit in the senators' chairs and stuff, and every time a senator would walk in, you'd all have to stand up and applaud them. Uh, I also got to sit through a bill hearing in the House of Representatives, um, and we like all got assigned a position for the hearing, so like I was Senator Durant, and I got to sit up front and be a senate member, and, uh, one of the pictures on the slideshow shows the, um, where I was sitting. I know it's not a very good picture, but I was so surprised how close I was. And I thought I was gonna have to go up and speak, and I was like, oh gosh, no. Because they, they were calling random witnesses to like give accounts on how they felt about phone use in school. And they told us that they would take all of the stuff that we brought up into consideration when they decided on like whether or not the bill should be passed. Also for our underclassmen, we had a record amount of students sign up for stu-, uh, class elections. Um, this year, class election saw a significant increase, um, in student interest with thirty kids running for at least one office position. While that number might seem small, it actually is a big step forward toward, um, compared to our previous years where we had to run elections in the fall because we didn't have any positions covered. Um, for the first time in a while, every position's received at least one candidate running, um, and it is really great to see the students getting involved and stepping up as leaders in our community. And that's all I have to listen.
That's all? April thirty. No, this is, this is fantastic. I mean, and congratulations on your octopus role.
Oh, yeah.
Um, in the show, I mean, you know, I was, I was often in the chorus in the musicals when I was, uh, a long time ago, I guess you could say. Uh, and the chorus really can, you know, i- i- it makes the energy and it brings a lot of the, it, it really brings in the audience too, I think, um, and my daughter loved when you all came down the aisles, I think that was one of her favorite parts, so you know, congratulations to you and everyone who was part of the play, and thank you so much for standing up and representing our district in so many different ways, and I mean, you're going to be amazing at Nichols, I just know it.
Thank you.
All right. Um, there is no public here this evening, so we will move along from public input. And N D A is absent this evening as well, um, and we will just recognize all of them that they made it to April vacation. They are officially on vacation as of this evening, as are the students, uh, so well deserved break to all of them and anything for all the work they're doing to keep everything going. Budget updates, so, hey Marie, I'll hand this over to you, and if you want to roll together FY twenty five and FY twenty six, any of these.
Um, FY, we wish, we still have a budget for you, we'll have that till the end of the year. Um, everybody's been respectful of it. If there's something they really need, they reach out, they've got good explanation. The income that we had this year, I think we were having a lot short on Medicaid. Um, we've been coming up short for the past few years, so I've been trying on our income statement to like gradually like lower it. Um, couple of things, the person who we had doing it was sort of the expert, she left last year. So we're training new staff in the special ed department for that. Um, another one of those just resigned, so now we are posting for that. I'm trying to fill in the pieces of that, but it's, it's not my wheelhouse, and I just don't know I E Ps, and that's really where it stems from. Um, so we're, we're working, then maybe we'll be short. Um, so that means my expense side needs to make up for that loss of income, so I'm not expecting an E and D like we have normally had. Um, so that's, that's really the big FY twenty five piece there. Um, FY twenty six, they just released, it was at the, um, House.
House Ways and Means.
Um, those numbers, like transportation is up a little bit higher, some of our expenses for school choice kids going out of district and charter, they are anticipating those are higher as well, so we'll see what happens when it all plays out in July, when we get our real numbers and stuff.
So, just a couple of things, a universal free lunch is funded at a hundred and ninety million, just a full year funding, that's, that's the proposals on the House Ways and Means. Uh, Rule Aid, which is really very beneficial to us and a lot of our districts around us. It looks like it'll be funded at the same amount as last year, and as Anne Marie just said, regional transportation. They're splitting it, um, between the regular line item and FY twenty five. So we're, we're trying to get clear clarity on that, so we don't know exactly what that means in terms of.
They're planning to use a piece of FY twenty five supplemental, so we don't know if that's supplemental will be rolled over to fund FY twenty six, or if we'll see any benefits of that in FY twenty five, but again, we won't know that until we get our payment, the end of June, beginning of July.
All right. Anything additional from the business managers report?
Um, no, we're just working on sending down grants, getting the most of them finished by June thirtieth. A couple of them are allowed to be rolled over, um, like the Title I and Special Ed One, they typically roll over each year a little bit to get us started in the summer this year. Um,
I'm just gonna pause if there are any questions on anything budget related this evening. All right, board docs, so I feel like we talked about this last time, oh, we did. Um, so here's, here's what has come to pass in between our March twentieth meeting and now. So on our, just as a reminder, in our March twentieth meeting, we all looked at diligence proposed price, which is around seventy seven hundred dollars. Um, discussed that, yes, it was higher, uh, than we necessarily were looking for, but it needed the time that it would give us, um, you know, to move it and then to figure out what we wanted to do in the long term. Um, however, um, when we went back to diligent to say, okay, all systems go, it was approved. They sent us an email that essentially said, oopsie, they gave you the wrong quote. Uh, actually, what you need costs eleven thousand two hundred and sixty-two dollars, uh, which is one of your attachments here. And we said, no. Um, so we did it first, tried to say, you need to honor the price that you gave us, it was, uh, it was listed on a contract, um, and they came back, and I'm not sure of the context of this, but basically said that it would be illegal for them to honor their original quote. I don't know what that means, I've not seen that in the service area before, and so we further went back to them to say, this is over ten thousand dollars. At anything over ten thousand dollars, we have to go to bid. Because of the way that we received an incorrect quote followed by a correct quote, this has not given us enough time. Now, we then also simultaneously reached out to other districts, and we were not the only ones to undergo this particular process. And so what we further did, what they did offer in the end is that they are now going to extend support for board docs, and therefore have offered us a one-year renewal for board docs. Uh, so we can remain where we are at the same price of five thousand four hundred dollars for the next year. Our intention is to then use the District Operations Subcommittee meeting to figure out, what do we want to do long term? Do we want to go out to bid? Is there other options available to us? And so this, this extension to maintain board docs will give us that necessary time to be able to really dig into this the way that we need to, and to look into any, you know, support we're going to need as we transition from what we use today, being board doc, board docs, to anything we might use in the future. Um, so there is no way I am proposing or signing off on eleven thousand dollars. Uh, plus, um, however, I do think I am happy would be the wrong word, but I, I feel it's the right thing to move, to keep board docs for a year, such that, you know, Susan, et cetera, are not dropping everything uh, to make a transition happen within too short a period of time, which then creates opportunities for mistakes and other things. Uh, so any questions or comments about that? Seeing none, we do need to revote because of the language of the last motion, of the motion in March twentieth. So I would entertain a motion to suspend migration to diligent and extend the board docs agreement for one year at cost of five thousand four hundred dollars, noting that board docs is now supplied by diligent. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Heather, second by Sean. One last chance for questions or comments. Seeing none, all in favor?
I.
Opposed, abstained, and I say yes, so that is unanimous, and thank you so much, everyone, I know that that was a little bit of a big. Ms. Super Chi, it is your time to shine. I will let you go through your agenda items, um, as you wish.
Um, so first is just a quick, um, update, we had some programming brought in, um, this past week for our grade four, three, twelve students. Uh, we brought in presenter, his name was Greg Kulowick from the Kulowick Group, and he, um, he is a retired teach, not retired, he's a previous teacher and, um, District Technology Coordinator, and he now is a consultant who speaks to teachers and students about appropriate use of technology, not just in schools, but in their personal lives, and so he came in and did presentations for our middle and high school students in assembly format, and then with our fourth graders, classroom-based, a little bit more intimate, um, talking about how we become a responsible citizen in digital spaces, and how do you help support creating a sense of belonging for other students or people in those settings? And, um, really well received by students, we have a lot of positive buzz from high school students the day after he was here. He had planned on doing, um, evening events for families, parents and families. Uh, we held the parent family night for middle high school, unfortunately, we had zero parents show up. So we made a little bit of a mid-course correction, and he is going to be over April break recording a session for us, for families that models and echoes some of the messaging that he sent to students, so that then we can push that out and have hopefully be able to reach more parents with those messages, so that will be forthcoming to parents, uh, following April vacation. Um, update on our wellness advisory committee. Uh, we have two major goals this year as a committee, one of those goals has been to increase opportunities for our staff health and wellness. Gosh, this is a lot brighter and more colorful with what it's projected than it was in my hopes. Uh, and so in that, in, along that goal, we had put out a survey to staff earlier this, uh, this year about, you know, what they're interested in when it comes to their own health and wellness, and how the committee can help support some efforts around that. And so coming back from winter break, we had put on a nutrition challenge, we partnered up with, um, Sixty-Six Nine Six and Fitness Concepts in Gardner Public Schools, and we had the duel of the districts, we had a competition, a friendly competition, oh, be it a competition, um, between Gardner and, and our staff here, we had quite a few staff members, um, enroll in that, and it was, I don't wanna say, it's not a weight loss challenge, but it was a nutrition challenge, we focused holistically on healthy patterns, we had a lot of fun. Um, and of course, we brought home the trophy, as you can see pictured here, and probably saw Dr. Casmit's video. And so that was, that was a lot of fun. Additionally, we are going to be offering, um, some pop-up classes, a brief to our staff in May or June, um, with trainers from, uh, CrossFit Sixty-Nine Six and Fitness Concepts. They'll, they'll be sending trainers here to run some just fun and active classes after school for some of our staff. Um, additionally, we have our, um, food service department providing a thank you breakfast to staff during the month, uh, during the week in early May, so we'll be putting that on in all three buildings, and then um, lastly, but certainly not least, we've partnered with Growing Places, which is a nonprofit organization that helps bring uh, food to places like us that are sort of a food desert, that don't have, uh, accessibility to grocery stores, and they accept, um, you know, Snap, Wic, and a whole bunch of additional, uh, systems of support for folks that need that as well. And so we will be bringing in a mobile farmer's market here, we're gonna be a host site for mobiles farmer's market that will be open to both the community and our staff. Um, and so in, in preparation for that, we wanted to build some excitement with our staff around that, so we brought in, in the last two half-day meetings, um, we did one for the elementary, one with mine for the middle high. We did what they call a fresh box event, and so they have a grant that provides large boxes of fresh fruits, vegetables, and other uh, from farms within a hundred and fifty mile radius, and so the grant pays the farmers for their products so that they can put together these boxes and distribute them in communities, so our staff were treated to a lot of uh, very interesting and exciting new vegetables, and fried popcorn kernels and beans and, and so forth in the last few weeks. So it was a lot of really good buzz of our staff, a lot of positivity around that as well. Um, and our second goal with our wellness advisory committee this year is to increase opportunities for community health and wellness. And so we'll be bringing in this mobile market. Um, we're going to do it as a pop-up event at the end of this year, likely the end of May or early June, and then our goal is to get on a monthly cycle with them next year, so that it will be a monthly event for our staff and our community. Um, and we'll be reaching out to some local folks to come and hopefully build that into a larger event as well. Um, and then in addition, we partnered with the Senior Center here in Templeton, and we are putting on a Senior Citizen Fun Field Day. Uh, so our seniors are putting on a field day event for seniors citizens, um, that will be on Wednesday, April thirtieth, and we're really looking forward to that. We're going to do that here in our high school, uh, and our, a few of our senior students will be putting on the events we've partnered um, with a couple folks over there to make sure the, uh, activities that we're putting on are appropriate, um, and of high interest and fun as well. We're like looking forward to that as well. Um, and then through that connection, we also are planning next year to, uh, continue that partnership with them and have some of our students work doing either volunteer hours or internships at the Senior Community Center. Um, our Equity Committee has been doing work digging into, uh, what's called our Vocal Survey, and so the Vocal Survey is, uh, of course, like everything in education, another acronym, um, and it stands for Views of Climate and Learning, and it's a survey that students have an opportunity to take, grades four, five, eight, and ten, and Desi puts out. Uh, and it really asks questions in these three big buckets, that ask questions about their engagement in school, their safety, and how they feel about their environment. And through that work, um, our students have recorded out a couple of big wins that include um, that teachers care and support for them, that was clear across all four grades that we analyzed and looked at. Um, there were a lot of really positive, um, data points around that, and we are far above the state's average in that area as well. Uh, and then in addition to that, uh, a lot of strong data showing our students feel safe here at school. When we think about our next steps, um, our committee really leaned into, um, the fact that we did have in pockets a couple of grades where we were below the state with students seeing themselves reflected in their classwork books and materials, particularly this was the case at the middle and high school. Uh, and so our Equity Team is doing some work digging into, uh, thinking about what resources we can put together to support curriculum review cycles, uh, as well as just sort of practice in classrooms, we've been spending our efforts there. Uh, and in addition to that, we have just recently received a grant, and this grant is for next school year, and the grant is called the Democratic Knowledge Project Grant, it's put out by an organization called the One Eight Foundation. The One Eight Foundation also funds Project Lead the Way and some additional project-based curriculums. And so what this is, is an opportunity for us to have some really intense and intentional professional development and resource support around our eighth grade civics curriculum. And so if you recall, and I'm sure you do, because I've talked about this a few times, but we brought in investigating history in our middle school. This is essentially an extension of that specific to eighth grade civics, and as you can see up here, uh, goal is for students to become authentic, informed, um, and skills change makers, um, and really understand how they can be active in a, in a democracy. Uh, and so what you'll see up here, this triangle is a framework that's used over the course of the year with students. Uh, where those purples, uh, purple boxes in the middle, uh, we talk to kids quite a bit about their personal values and what they, what they believe, what their knowledge base and their skills are coming into the class in terms of civics and, and democracy. Um, and then the blue at the bottom is the shared civics val, civic values and how we can support um, both ourselves and our community operating, uh, with a healthy democracy. And so those are the foundational pieces that students will kind of circle back to as they go through different units of study around civics and civic engagement, and also is tied to the civic engagement project that we do at the end of eighth grade, which is a state requirement for all eighth grade students in the state of Massachusetts. Uh, what's really interesting is this is not necessarily a new curriculum for us because our teacher has, our eighth grade civic teacher has been utilizing quite a few of the resources in this curriculum already, because it is free and open source. So it is available for anyone to view or dig into, uh, but what this does is it helps us get her some really intense training, uh, and also a cohort of people who teach the same thing she teaches, because she's a singleton here, she's the only one who teaches eighth grade civics, and she actually approached us and asked about this at the same time the grant came out, when we were talking about it. Uh, and Mr. Young, uh, Ms. Romellard, who's our eighth grade civics teacher, and myself went on Monday to our initial grant kickoff meeting, um, and we all left just really excited about what this is gonna do to help us really create a more robust, uh, program for our eighth grade civics, and so she's piloting some of the materials uh, this year for the civic project, so that she'll have a chance to work on those as we do a full rollout with the grant support next year. Any questions about any of that before I jump into the program of studies? A lot.
Lots of good things happening, I mean, this is really, this is great to hear about and see, um, you know, celebrate, um, because there's lots of amazing things that happen in this district, and it's nice to remember that and recognize them and so, and, you know, dig in to see all the goodness and all the great work that's happening across the district.
Thank you, thank you. Um, attached to your packet, sorry, I don't have a slide for this, but, uh, attached to your pocket is our draft program of studies for next school year. Um, and so just as a reminder, we are, uh, the school committee is required to vote and approve the program of studies annually for our high school. Uh, you'll see the, you'll see anything that's removed as a strike in this copy and anything that is an edit or add in print. Uh, we did add a page at the front with some of the major changes. Uh, and I do just wanna sort of open up the floor, if anyone has specific questions, I'm, I'm happy to go through these if folks would like me to, or if you already have a chance to review it, and you have just specific questions, I'm happy to answer any of those as well.
Before we get into any specific questions, are there any updates that you would wanna call out for the public since we'll have access to this document following this meeting?
Yes, so first and foremost, our MCAS and graduation requirements section is up, is, uh, substantially completely revamped. Uh, and that is to match the new school committee policy and regulations around competency determination and graduation requirements uh, to align with our school committee policy that we updated in, I believe, this January, so there are some changes there. Uh, we've updated language in our dual enrollment and early college program to create more clarity and, uh, around the difference between those two programs. Um, we, some of the things that you'll see, like adding resource level one, that has happened in practice, we just didn't have it in the chart, so while it's represented in classes, level, levels of classes throughout the program study, we just didn't have it on that initial chart on the front page. So we've added that, we updated our, uh, non-discrimination policy. We have added early college courses that are now being offered, and I have to. We have added early college courses that are now being offered. And I have to say, this is a moving target sometimes because. Sometimes our early college partners, not much you sit or fifth first state will. Make changes to us mid-year for the next semester and say, hey, instead of offering, you know, speech, we're going to offer. You know, another class or writing class. So sometimes those are changes. There's a little disclaimer in there, but as far as we know, we have classes from the beginning of the year that we updated. We have added what, what looks like an addition is actually not an addition. So you'll see in red, we've added AP. Calculus B C course through virtual high school. This has been something that we have offered in the past few years. But we haven't had it in our program of studies. We don't offer it very often, but every once in a while. We will have a student who excels beyond what we offer. So essentially they'll be beyond AP calculus. And so we have access to virtual high schools. Provides additional enrichment math courses, one specifically. And so we just realized, you know what? We should really have this in our program of studies because we've been operating. So that. Is not an addition, but it's just an update to our, to our POS to make sure that's included. We've added and updated the course descriptions for our in-house courses for the MVP Academy students. As we rolled that program out in its inaugural year, this year, we realized we really wanted to tighten up. The language around what their courses were. And we originally had a skills, excuse me, an academic coaching course, but that really has morphed into. More of a career preparations course with original academics of course. So you'll see a new description for that course. And lastly, we have just done a little bit of updates with some of our science classes as we have really shifted to more of a. Hands-on lab-based science in a couple of places where the descriptions just hadn't been updated to reflect that. So you'll see a few science courses with some. Some updates to reflect that, that more hands-on project-based, lab-based approach. I think that is the summary.
Now I would open up to any questions or comments on the table? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the twenty twenty five to twenty twenty six program of studies as presented. Motion by Danielle, second by Sean. One last chance for any questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, abstained, and I say yes. So that is unanimous.
Thank you.
All right. We do not have any surplus items this evening, but we do have. Several out of state trips coming up. Is anyone wanting to speak to those?
Mad Chair, I'll just, I'll take a stab. It is that time of year. So we have a cannibally. The park trip, which has been a fairly consistent. Destination for the, I believe it's the sixth grade, right? Yep. And Ms. Parker has put that request in. There's something that they do here. Do you want me to scroll through all of them or do you want me to just go one by one?
You can go through all of them.
Okay. And so then there's, so there's that. And then Ms. Donnelly has put in. There's a Keene State College Fair and Tour. In Keene, New Hampshire. And it's the, it's, it's part of the, the program that we offer for the juniors and sophomores, but for the college search process. We've actually done a couple of these, but mostly in-state. This would. Of course, be interesting. So I'll wait for the Horatio, or do you want me to just go right into the Horatio Alford one as well?
Let's wait on that one just because it's a separate. It's not quite, it's not really a field trip. As such, we'll do these one at a time and we'll see if anyone has questions about either of them as part of the motion. So I'd entertain a motion to approve the out-of-state field trip for the sixth grade on June twelfth, twenty twenty five to Kennedy Lake Park in San Juan, New Hampshire. Motion by Sean, second by Heather. Any questions or comments about that field trip? Seeing none, all in favor?
All in.
Opposed, abstained, and I say yes. So that is unanimous. And then next on the docket, I would entertain a motion to approve the out-of-state field trip for the. Did you say junior and sophomore class? Junior class, just the junior class on May twentieth, twenty twenty five to Keene State College Fair and Tour in Keene, New Hampshire. Motion by Sean, second by Heather. Any questions or comments about that opportunity?
Good for them.
Yeah, that's great. Seeing no further questions or comments, all in favor? Opposed, abstained, and I say yes. So that is possibly unanimous. And now we will move to the Horatio Alger Washington DC trip.
Thank you, Mad Chair. So last meeting, as far as Kane, before the school committee. In great depth talked about his experience, not only as a student back when. With this program, but also now as someone who is, is part of the program and. You know, goes down at least once a year to help mentor. You know, and to be part of this, this larger picture for the American enterprise son. So before last, when we spoke last, we, we were giving everyone in, in general a hint. You know, because it. It came to be that they were going to, this is a new venture. To include more schools and given his connections and familiarity with the program. They asked Cory if, if, if we would like to be part of. So. We embarked on just the planning of it. Last time we spoke, we had yet to have. Staff identified. We did not have, of course, students identified. We really didn't have. Frankly. So since we've met last month, all of those items, and I think the best, probably the best document to look at. Is the field trip request because it, it really kind of goes. In order. And it gives you the information that I, I, I believe that you would. Want and need, but in essence, there'll be ten students and two staff members. The two staff members are Eric Supple. And Garrett Schlunt, they have volunteered to be part of that. As the, as the chaperones, there is absolutely zero cost. Period to any student or staff member for that matter. And that includes transportation to the airport, quite frankly. So. We. We've identified the students. We actually have a list of more than ten. In case some folks can't make it, et cetera. We have not, we have not informed them, of course. Given the fact that we don't know that we have permission to go quite yet. So given all of that, I'll, I'll just pause for a moment. Because you've, you've heard the, the presentation last month. Here is the data or the, I guess, the important information that you obviously want to consider. For my two cents, I think this is something outstanding. I, you know, I. I don't know who the students are, quite frankly, but to have this opportunity to be part of this would be. Just, just a fantastic opportunity. And we've got some, we've got our own folks, of course, going down there to, to chaperone. So two staff and ten kids is, is a very good ratio.
So we'll get a motion on the table and then we'll open it up for questions or comments. I would entertain a motion to approve the Horatio Alger. Washington DC field trip for June twenty. For June twenty second to twenty fifth, twenty twenty five as presented. Second, motion by Sean and second by Heather. Now open for questions or comments, Sean?
I just got a quick one. Liability is still the same on this field trip as it would be in the other field.
I think it forces the district carry that responsibility and of course. You know, pragmatic piece of just the insurance.
Yeah, no, that's, I'm only asking because, you know, put people on point. So it's a fair question. But I also think it's a great opportunity.
Any other questions or comments? All right. See, none, all in favor? Opposed, abstained, and I say yes. So lots of enthusiastic guesses for that. Very exciting. Very much would like an update on that is.
Oh, absolutely.
Or selected because I think this is going to be just. He really loves it.
If I understand that they have a PR. On of this, I'm sure that there. There, there will be a lot of that, so.
CAPS collaborative?
This is standard, is the updated of the CAPS collaborative agreement. In general, every year, the, the agreement. You know, is presented before each and every school committing. And there are no major changes to. The agreement that you've, you've seen before. In essence, they require a signature. Of course, you will elect a person at some point to be the. The voting member of CAPS collaborative. I shouldn't, I can't wait to see who that might be to attend the meetings. But in, but in general, this was supposed to be presented last month, but we had our budget hearing. And it just wasn't a good time. It just didn't fit. So I let CAPS know that we'd be doing it this month, last month. For you is the, the agreement, which is not.
And a reminder of what CAPS is for those who.
Very much. CAPS collaborative is one of the two collaboratives that. That we are a part of. They offer variety of services generally for special needs students. Whether it be behavioral vision. Hearing, you know, they, they are our collaborative arm when we need specialized instructional options. They, they are part of our. You know, our, our bailiwick of services that we like to offer. So we can, we can offer to our kids. So they are, they are generally housed out of Westminster and Massachusetts, but they, they have satellite. Classrooms and programs throughout really central mass. Mostly in, in school districts, member school districts. That have the space. And we do, we have, boy, probably. Seven or eight students, I think, that are involved in CAPS collab in some capacity, whether it be. Folks coming up here to do some consulting work or they are in one of them.
All right. I would entertain a motion to approve the updated CAPS collaborative agreement as presented and effective July first, twenty twenty five. Motion by Sean.
Second.
Second by Heather. Any questions or comments about that agreement or about CAPS collaborative in general? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, abstained, and I say yes. So that is unanimous. Now we have several donations this evening. Susan, can you talk through those?
I can, yes. So we recently got a donation from the Templeton Lions Club, a two hundred dollar donation to be given to the high school musical program. Tell me to go through and you'll both have the answer. Secondly, we got a donation from. Two-part actually. So the total is seven hundred and fifty dollars. It's a donation to the NRSD Special Olympics Team. It's given by Don Bouchard. She does a fundraiser each year in Gardner Common Show. It's a great success and. Thousand thirteen hundred was from the show and then another two fifty was from the Gardner Police Relief Association combination. So it was. Total of seventeen fifty.
Great. Thank you. So I would entertain a motion to accept the two hundred dollar donation from the Templeton Lions Club to be given to the high school music program. Motion by Sean.
Second.
Second by Heather. Any questions or comments about that donation? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, abstained, and I say yes. And I would also entertain a motion to accept the one thousand seven hundred and fifty dollar donation to the NRSD Special Olympics Team. Given in part by Don Bouchard in the amount of one thousand five hundred dollars and the Gardner Police Relief Association in the amount of two hundred and fifty dollars.
So.
Motion by Sean, second, second by Heather. Any questions or comments about that? Heard that? Yes, donation. Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, abstained, and I say yes. So that is unanimous. And please do extend our thanks to all of those folks who've donated. Donation has really helped to support some of the programs that we have here and we truly appreciate those gestures of support.
Policy. We have in front of us proposed update to policy A D D A background checks policy. And if you scroll to the end, you'll have seen that there's just two more categories added. Regarding collecting information from the SORI, which stands for the Sex Benet registration information. Also from the Department of Children and Families.
And just to add some additional background, these are changes to the policy that were recently adopted by, I want to say Westminster. Did I get? Is my memory helping or something? Okay. And so they had, and this has been in the news a little bit locally. And so of course, this was something we were very interested in because it's another opportunity to ensure that we can keep our kids safe and keep the. Keep kids feeling safe in our district as evidenced by the interview. So we wanted to make sure that this, these were resources that we also were accessing in that effort.
It just doesn't decide people, they're all, what do you mean? Ever done this before? Usually if someone is arrested or is charged or is. Done, has actually come to jail, prison, they'll come up on the court. Okay. So if any of these things were to have taken place and they were charged formally and go through the process, that would obviously come up. But it doesn't always come up. Are fifty-one As. Either substantiated or not. Now, I'll be very clear. A fifty-one A when. Someone calls in a fifty-one A. That doesn't necessarily mean that automatically something is wrong. You know, or something has happened or, you know, that is the process in which we take. Schools file many fifty-one As. We are ending orders. Many, many of them get screened out. I mean, there was no, no issue. But there is no mechanism in general that you would know if someone had a substantiated fifty-one A. For abuse and or neglect. It, it, they don't all feed into one system, so to speak. So. This will close the loop on that, but I just want to assure folks who are listening. Committee is that if there was, of course, it would have picked, it picks up everything or anything that someone was arrested for or charged with. Okay. So there, it's not that as if no one has ever not known when that has happened, that Cory would have picked that up. But this is just another layer. That we'll be able to access to make a, you know, to make the best decision we can on folks who are going to hold their kids.
So I would entertain a motion to accept A D D A background checks policy for first reading as presented. Motion by Sean. Second by Heather. Any questions or comments about the changes to A D D A? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, abstained, and I say yes. So that is unanimous. And then finally, under new business. Doctor C's favorite time of year, the evaluation cycle is coming, coming right up. So really what we just wanted to do in this meeting was first of all, to remind everyone that it is that time of year. But secondly, there was a small update requested in. To create better alignment between the creation of updated district goals. Such that it, to give us, to give the district the time to get those goals updated and then make sure that Dr. C's new goals for the next two-year cycle can be in alignment with those district goals. They ask, hey. Can we just push back this presentation until May? We said, you know, I said, I said, I have no problem with that. So it's just to make all of you aware and to prepare you that. We will be doing a summative evaluation for the period of July first, twenty twenty three to June thirtieth, twenty twenty five during the month of June. So we'll, we'll prep everyone for that over the coming, over the coming meetings. Did I miss anything on that update?
No, both things will happen in May.
Yeah.
Just to make them more mindful.
All right. Dr. C, it's your turn.
Oh my gosh, okay. So. You know, one of, I have a lot of favorite times. You know, when I get to go down to the Wisconsin Super Tents Association, I'm scholar lunch and it's. Is up, it's up there in the top. Two or three. It's just, it's a great time to not only see just, you know, where our future. Two or three, it's just, it's a great time to not only see just, you know, where our future is going with some of the best and brightest. Um, not all of the best, just some of the best. That central mass has.
That's what was making me smile.
Well, we're trying to make her laugh and we were very successful, so. Um, so as I've said before, it, you know, I get a great opportunity, um, I'm not sure that they see this as a great opportunity, but I have been trapped. In my car with, I'm just too young, but I get to talk to them for an hour and they can't escape. And so, um, I love it, they. Love it less, but that's okay, um, because um it really is a great time. Um, just to kind of hang out and it's a great, you know, get to hear all the wonderful things that they do and of course. Um, every time you've been down there with uh whoever the student may be. Um, they, they really do uh make us very, very proud, um. You know, I. I will share that um lots of times when you hear the accolades from, again, it's probably over fifty, sixty students who are recognized. Some of the accolades are just. Yeah, they've done open-heart surgery at age nine, they've done. So, and everyone has, of course, this thing, and, and so what I'm always proud of is that um when our kiddos, you know, our kiddos, they're, they're young adults. But um when they read uh off all the uh the accolades that they have done, you know, are, I always. I always appreciate that because we generally have folks who speak about what, not only what they're, what they've accomplished. Um, but what they've done during the same time, and really what I'm talking about is working. Lot of our students work. And they do wonderful things. And so I, I, and that's not lost on the superintendents who I, you know, who I sit around. Um, when someone says like, you know, not only did I do all these great things, they'll say it was funny, but I also say you've got enough money working thirty-five hours. When you hear something like that. Um, because that's, that's what it is, like, working hard and doing great things at the same time, and almost inevitably every year. One of our students has that as a reflection and I'm always very, very proud of them. I'm proud of them anyway, of course, but I'm always proud uh that, that folks here that, you know, our kids are doing such great things and by the way, they're almost holding. Full-time job at the same time, so, um, so yes, it was, Catherine and I had a wonderful time, I'm sure she would tell us the same. We really did have a great, a great conversation, I swear, um, so that was fantastic, um. So we've been chasing this award, you know, I'm not really, yes, I, I'm into awards because they. They actually promote the wonderful things that this district does, so, um. And, but in the end, sometimes, you know, I'm really looking for brass tacks, like, what are we doing in real life? This one, this one, this one, I, I did, I did, because the, the first day I stepped on this campus. You know, back in sixteen, it was obvious that the commitment um that this, these, our member talents in this, in this school district has towards veterans. Uh, and, and the military and just walk into our, you know, lobby and you come to the Memorial Day, there's no Memorial Day. Um, exercise anywhere better than, I'm going to tell you that, it is, people have said. I brag a lot, as you know, but people have said that to me who are from other places and who have seen. We, we really embrace um our veterans and so this opportunity came up a couple of years ago. Yeah, last year, and we just didn't have enough time to, to, you know, to really make it happen and. Representatives Lotnick had called us and said, boy, this would, I think this is a rally, and we just didn't have time, we just didn't have enough time, so this year. Plenty of time and honestly, Molly and her, and her group really, Mr. Young and the high school. Attacked us, quite frankly, and um it was, it was daunting. Um, we had to prove a lot of things, we had to show what we, what we do and what our capacities are and. And so, we did that, and we did that in flying colors, um, and we found that yesterday that um we in fact are identified as a purple star school. Um, which is fantastic, we're only one of seven in the entire state. I, I called Representative Lotnick immediately and he was just like, oh my God, this is great. Um, but really, you know, in essence, what it is, is that we have supports in place to recognize. Um, our students who may be part of military families and there's, there's, you know, a lot goes into that, you know, we have. Um, parents who are maybe under deployment. Um, for long periods of time and, and because of the way the military is, maybe they've done a lot of moves, et cetera, and so. We have someone who was identified just to really kind of be a, a touch point to, you know, to those folks and this is, like I said, this was. This was great because it really honestly represents what the community feels about our military folks here, we have, we have fifty-five. How many students do we have? Is it fifty-five?
I believe it's around that.
Yeah, we have, we have fifty-five students in this district on considered military. You know, families from, coming from military families, that's a lot, you know, in such a small community, so, um, yay us. Um, and um we'll be able to, what I believe, we'll be able to identify ourselves on our website now.
We actually, we already have, and our military connected liaisons are listed on our website, Eric Chrisan Stanholm. And Tom Salvador, um, and in addition to that, um, Eric Supple, who's not serving as liaison, was instrumental. Um, in supporting us, um, gathering data and. Creating resources to support military families to receive this designation, so they want to make sure to do a show of gratitude to those three as well as Mr. Young.
This is really great, so.
Okay.
Next. Um, I, I'm not going to, I certainly won't repeat all the wonderful things. Sign Coney has, you know, has just listed, it has been a busy month, a lot of great things, it seems like it all gets compressed into one. Three to four week, I'm prepared, the play was absolutely amazing. Uh, it, it really was, um, I have to say. The costumes um in the sets were, I would say, if we do not win a tan for those, I, I don't. Then I don't know, I just don't know what they're looking for, if you looked at the picture, which you don't need to put it back up, but they have all the cast members in their car. You tell me who has better costume, right?
That was just dress rehearsal.
That was just for us. Right, so, it is amazing, uh, fantastic, 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 so I just want to make sure, yeah, so if you look at that, give me a break. So, um. So yeah, we're, we have, uh, of course, spring sports are in full swing, um. And we're trying to dodge the rain and the snow, et cetera, so, um, off we go with that and that'll, trust me, it'll go like this. The graduation here very, very soon, um, so I'm going to go right to student enrollment, uh, just a couple of things about student enrollment. We're, this is an, this is a different trend for us. We've, I, I believe that we have over the past three months, we've seen a reduction of about fifteen or sixteen students. Um, over the last couple of months. And that's different for us, we don't generally see that kind of, um. You know, we don't see that kind of movement, um, this kind of late, so look at that to see, you know, well, who are they? If we know what, that, if there's any trend possible, but, but in essence. But really, our, our population or our, our student enrollment stayed roughly the same as the sheet, I think that you have in front of you shows us that we've. We dropped five students, four um from Templeton, one school choice. Um, so we're fourteen fifty-four and, you know, from March to April. Um, but yeah, we're, we're going to kind of take a look at, to see if there's, you know, if there's any. It's something that we should know in terms of trend. Let's see, okay.
Whichever.
Okay, I, how about if I just get, if I go try to beat on mine? So. Generally every year, yep, you know, it's April, um, the school committee considers whether or not it's going to. You know, accept school choice students into the district, um, just as a general, um, rule. Uh, just as a reminder for folks who might be listening, you can't stop from kids, you can't vote uh for kids not to leave the district. Uh, in school choice, but it's up to the school choice whether or not, just generally they, they are going to be a school choice. Accepting district and we have to notify the uh, the department of that so that they can. They, they know this thing on the website, but generally what we do is that once you make that decision. Um, we, whatever the next meeting might be, we. We talk numbers, right, we talk about like, okay, how many seats do we have open, where? And what I did, uh, I think it was during our last operations meeting, what I'm asking tonight is if. If, if the committee would consider doing that all in one meeting, and I have, I had the information, of course, that was that. Um, and the reason why is because we, Ms. Bonnie is, you know, going to go slowly creative. Without, it was, it was me, uh, but there was certainly the, the main driver of any type of, of issue. But the number of, of, of folks who are calling about school choices, I don't know. Quadruple, uh, you know, and we're, we'll be there, we'll be there, we'll, you know, yeah, next month, we're trying, and they're just, they're calling, they're calling. So, in order, honestly, in all jokes aside, what we'd like to do is identify tonight exactly, and I've talked to all the building principals, we've. Met, uh, you know, yesterday and a couple of days before to see where we would, uh, where we have uh the ability to take students across the district. Um, so I'd like to do that in, you know, in one meeting, I don't know, Adam Chair, if you want to just vote to see if you're even going to consider. School choice in first and then do that, or consider the whole, the whole model.
I defer to the committee, um, to see what their thoughts are, I mean, do we, are we, are we confident enough that? Pay with school choice, that we want to just move to examine the numbers, or do we want to vote on whether or not we accept school choice at all? Sean, I see your hands.
Yeah, don't we have a line item in our budget that suggests that we need the money from school choice?
Yes.
Very good.
So, I didn't know, again, I didn't want to be.
Just, just, you know, throwing that fun fact up there.
So I could just start, Adam Chair, if you want, and we can just.
Yeah, I mean, so I, I give one last chance, speaker forever, hold your peace, if anyone would want to make a case for school choice or not. I see no one, so I'd say we're going to move ahead and we'll vote on the numbers.
So normally, well, to the past five years, um, and we have not considered any students at the elementary level. I, I've said on a few occasions, mostly during the budget hearings, that we're going to have to consider that across the district because. In general, our middle and high schools are, are, you know, they're, they're foolish and we, where we have some opportunities at the elementary. School and as I talk about the differential a lot. In, in terms of what we have coming out of school, school choice revolving in terms of our educators, it was important to do what we could without, of course, jeopardizing. Uh, too much, you know, in terms of class sizes or, or et cetera, so what I've done is I, in sitting with Marcy, uh, down at T E S. And I, I'll go, again, I'll just kind of go in order, um, but we're not. We are not confident K, kindergarten is very, it's fluid. And so to say today, like right now, enrollment is a little, is a little behind what it was last year, but we never know. And that could, that could, you know, quadruple by the end of, you know, the end of the school year or in, or in the middle of the summer. So we're not making any recommendations at this point in time to put any students in K whatsoever, so it means zero, right, for K. The first, uh, okay, so when I say rising. I'm going to call them out by the class, right, so, you know, so if I say the current first grade with a rising second. It's really the class of twenty twenty-six, it'll be next year's second grade, um, we, looking at those, looking at that group. We can comfortably fit eleven school choice students among the five.
Did you want to do first grade?
Oh, sorry, uh, K, that's rising, sorry, K. Yeah.
Kindergarten, rising.
Kindergarten, no, sorry, K to one is another zero. So, rising one, rising first grade zero, sorry, thank you. The rising second grade, eleven. The rising third, four. The rising fourth, ten. That's a grand total of twenty-five students for the elementary, just to, just to put it in perspective. In terms of the middle school. Uh, rising fifth, nine. Rising six, four. Rising seven, zero. Uh, which is a grand total of, yes, I did my, I did correctly, thirteen. For the high school, um. Always, always a number in flux, right, rising nine, so I just want to just, just stick here for a second, so you have. These are eighth graders now, going to be. Rising eighth is a, uh. Seven, sorry, rising eighth is seven. Rising ninth. That's a number in flux because of Monty Tech. Um, so we have twenty-three students who've been accepted into Monty Tech. Probably double down on the waitlist, but twenty-three accepted, ten of those are school choice. So if you remember, just again, for the committee and anyone who's listening at home. We have school choice students who are in the eighth grade, they apply to Monty Tech, they're from towns all around us. If they are selected, they're contributing to the Monty Tech assessment, not us. But they might, there might be a student from near Gansett somewhere in a neighboring district, school choice. Who got accepted into Monty Tech, of course, we, okay, so, so I just say that because that factors into the numbers, grand, the grand total of how many student. Uh, school choice students that we are adding, but just, just to kind of give you that, so, uh, but to the brass tacks, the rising ninth grade nine. The rising tenth grade, five. And the rising eleventh grade, five, zero for the rising seniors or twelfth grade. Um, for a grand total nineteen for the high school. So when you add that, you know, you, you look at a number.
Sixteen, school, including fifth grade?
Uh, then forty-nine? Forty-nine, um, I have nineteen, hold on, make sure I add the eighth grade.
Seven, eighth grade, nine.
Sixteen, yeah, you're right, yeah. No, no, I still do the.
And then it's sixteen, twenty-six, sorry.
Because eighth grade in my head is still little, sorry. It's just not been that way for five.
That's okay, I'm here for you.
So, um, so, given that, you know, when we look at the total number. Um, of, of students, and I'll have to just recalculate that, but we know a couple of things. One, we generally will not fill every seat. Uh, that we have available. Um, two, we're going to lose more kids, this, you know, our school choice kids are going, eighth grade is such a flux. Kid, kiddos who are going from the eighth and ninth grade go to a lot of different places, not just Monty Tech, they need to go to maybe private, maybe they go back to their home. District if there's no choice, there's a lot of those things, so. So we don't know, you know, exactly how that will be, we, what we do know is that we'll lose if, if all these uh kiddos go to Monty Tech. And talking about the ten school choice students, which we would fully expect them to. To do that, um, we'll lose thirty-five school choice students next year. Um, ten and roughly twenty-five choice out of the senior class. Okay, so that's why we try to, try to, um, if, if, if nothing else, we try to cover those losses, right? Try to keep, keep up with that. With all that said, um. The numbers uh of the class sizes are, you know, were, were. Talked about with the building principals, they felt, they, they gave me these numbers, I did not, we did not give them these numbers, I didn't say we needed to hit a certain number or anything to that effect. Um, this, the numbers that they felt comfortable with and the staff are actually very knowledgeable that, that we're, that we're doing this because they've been watching, of course, our. Meetings, and so, um. I'll, I'll just pause because I, I don't know, I'm sure that there's questions.
I, I have a couple, um, the first one is, I, I just, you kind of already answered a lot of them, my number one concern as a committee member is what are these class sizes going to be?
Hmm.
Um, and it sounds like that was taken into consideration. Uh, because I'm all for school choice, however, I'm not all for. Large.
If the elementary, they'll average twenty-two.
Yeah.
With, with, with those, those.
And then my second question is, which was not answered yet, um, what's the comparison of school choice from last year to this year? Given that we opened up all those seats, all those numbers.
In terms of comparison, like how many in and out?
No, no, in terms of how many did we let in last year versus how many are we trying to let in this year?
Um.
Is that pretty equal? Because it's all about that number, right, we're playing that, that game.
Yeah, we'd have to, I, I have to say, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say we only probably accepted thirteen, probably maybe thirteen, only thirteen students, school choice, give or take.
We only accepted a few in the high school because middle school was full, so the only grades we were, the only thing I can. Could turn, in this moment, is that it was only high school.
We had far more seats, yes, I'm sorry, I'm not sure. Yeah, we had far more seats available. We, we did not fill them. Ultimately, I believe it was about thirteen students that we took in. I'd have to double check this, but it was certainly well under. You know, the number of seats that we had available. Um, will that change this year? I don't, I don't, I don't know. It very well be the same.
Because we're, we're, please, somebody correct me if I'm wrong, we're trying to set a certain number of students to in order to meet that.
We're, we're trying to increase that, that differential.
Correct, and by opening it up to the elementary school, essentially, we give more opportunity to create that differential that we're trying to, on that magical line graph you presented.
Right, exactly, exactly. We're trying to get around ninety-two, you know, in that area, in terms of the differential, but. Granted, anywhere between seventy and nine, the differential, you know, is, is where we want to be, where, where we're gonna need. Uh, quite frankly, and it was never, it was never an effort to do that before, uh, because we would just take them. It was pretty much wide open. We have not done, we're doing it more strategically now. We can't go to the backs of the middle and high school because that's where some of our margin numbers are. The, the number of kids that we're adding to the elementary, um, still only keeps at twenty-two. We do not foresee, I think I've said this a couple of times already in the budget presentations, but we do not see, there's no indication that we're gonna see a, a surge. Uh, you know, of thirty-six or fifty-six students across the district coming in. We just don't, we don't see that. Um, again, we don't, don't always know, but, you know, the indicators such as the, the housing that's being, you know, being built. Uh, you know, go, they're, they're about a year or two years away. That would be something we would have definitely consider. At, at that time, but that, that's not ready to, you know, that's something close to being, you know, completed. Um, and, you know, some of the, although we know that there's, there are about as many a building permits that were pulled for, you know, for, for this, that, why is almost last year. We don't, we, we're not, we're not aware of a, a tremendous amount of building, actual building, a lot of. But, you know, again, regardless, we've offered it enough that if we do get a surge of kids somewhere at the elementary. Fine, um, and at the, at the middle and high school, with the exception of the seventh grade, the, the rising seventh grade, pardon me. That is our last class, you know, uh, we haven't, that, that would have to be a resident. Uh, for it to be, you know, to be added to the seventh grade, um, at this level.
Thank you.
I'm moving to vote without having that number. So. Blank. So I would entertain a motion to approve sixty-four school choice openings. As outlined, including eleven for rising grade two, four for rising grade three. Ten for rising grade four, nine for rising grade five, four for rising grade six. Seven for rising grade eight, nine for rising grade nine. Five for rising grade ten and five for rising grade eleven. All other grades that I did not list have zero openings. So I'm going to motion by Heather, second by Sean. Any remaining questions or comments? We'll certainly follow up on the high school number, yeah, Sean.
Yeah, I think my only question is, if the classes that are in flux, are we gonna have to go on them after or? Look, I'm good with all of this, I just.
Yeah, that's a great question, and I think we, and we have done it. Um, but only, uh, I, I think we've only done it a couple of times, mostly with kindergarten, uh, be, meaning, uh, the incoming kindergarten. Because we just don't know. By the time we do know, around August, let's just say that. Most people have made their, have made their, um, their decision. I, I know that what Susan has done in the past, has said exactly that. We don't know about kindergarten. We don't know, um, if you'd like to add, if you want to put, you know, put your information in, but there's no, you know, we've done those type of things, but. We've done it both ways. In the year that we did consider it late, we didn't get any takers, uh, quite frankly, so. I don't, I think that once we, once we go through this, I, I don't know that they'll be.
It's closed unless we decide to reopen it, because we would have to, if the committee decide to. I did happen to find. Thank you, Google. Uh, in Google Drive, per the May first, twenty twenty-four meeting, we voted to open up seventeen seats. Uh, and those were spread across grades seven and grade nine. Um, there were not any other seats that we opened up in the end. No, so that was the total.
This is pretty significant.
If I could just.
Yeah.
Just because we have those amounts up, and I'm trying to.
It's not necessarily not being accepted, but if they're not being.
Yeah, so we're gonna, yeah, we have that number.
I'm gonna say we're gonna accept the deal.
Okay.
Yeah, it gives us the freedom to.
Yeah, exactly.
Have opportunities to accept students at different levels, right, just to.
Any other questions or comments?
They do.
Seeing none, all in favor?
Sorry.
Opposed, abstained, and I say yes, so that is unanimous. And then we just have, um, union negotiations letter from.
So the, in the way of explaining before I read, uh, we received a, um, an informational request. Mr. Bennett, in regards to six oh three C M R forty-one point zero four. Uh, and that is the, the part of the regulation that is municipal representative and regional school district collective bargaining. So. I wanna, so the, the request was to, um, to, of course, send or provide, Mr. Bennett, with, um. Every or any letter that has been, uh, sent to the, the district, uh, member towns in regards to inviting them. To be part of, in one capacity or the other, uh, co- co- the collective bargaining, um, with our, our union. Bargaining. So this, I, it'd be easier for me just to re- uh, read my response, so. Uh, thank you for your inquiry, um, Susan Forager, F O I A request regarding six oh three C M R forty-one four municipal representative and regional school district collective bargaining. Specifically, the notification letter or email from the district, Templeton's town administrator and or board chair regarding collective bargaining negotiations. Attached, the only correspondence sent to Templeton Phillips or Phillipston's town administrator board chair we have on file. And they are, just for reference, um, bargaining notification sent in two thousand and eleven and bargaining notification sent in two thousand and thirteen. In the interest of full transparency, I want to acknowledge that when I became superintendent in two thousand and sixteen, I inherited an active negotiation between the district and the N D A. That did not include representation from either of the member towns. Unaware of the regulatory requirement under six oh three C M R forty-one point zero four. Um, at the time, I continued the practice of not inviting municipal officials to participate in collective bargaining. Uh, negotiations, practice was not intended to exclude, but rather stemmed from a lack of awareness of the regulation on my part. Now that we are fully informed of the, I mean, six oh three C M R footing one dash zero four, the district is committed to complying. With the regulation for further negotiations. Um. You know, it's, it's, it's interesting, because I, we, I did not know that this was in the regulation. Um, I make no excuse, uh, there's, they're really, you know, when you take, when you take this position on, you are in fact supposed to be expected to know everything. Um, this was low hanging fruit. I had never read this part of the regulation. I've been through that regulation. I don't know. It's, it's the regulation that in, in general. Um, outlines regional school districts. Never been bargaining. And so, a- again. It, it certainly falls on the superintendent to do that. I had no idea if it's, it was done prior to eleven. We don't, we just do not have. Emails or letters that go past two thousand and eleven, um. Two thousand and eleven. We have no idea if, that folks even accepted the invitation. Um, and looking through the few minutes that we could find, there was no, there was no indication that they were part of the. Uh, be, a part of the negotiation, uh, in any capacity, but in any respect. Um, that, that was my response. I know that it was a discussion at the very end of the select board meeting. Couple of weeks ago, the last select board meeting, awaiting this information. That is the information. I thought it would be best that first off, I just, you know, I, I just, of course, inform the school committee, but do so in open session. So that folks understand that this is what has taken place. Um, I know that, uh, I think, I, I know that, um, Madam Chair, was, we've all called our rep, our individual agencies in regards to this, because. This has never been brought up, um, on my end of things, uh, through, um, ours, which is the, it's through the regional association, and, you know.
Yeah, I could share, I, I called M A S C and I specifically just speak to a rep that worked at regional school districts. Um, and she, uh, you know, just stated, you know, hey, can you give me some more context on this? And she. Um, you know, didn't state, you know, I said, I've never seen any training on this, and she did confirm it, even though I've been to many regional districts. Um, trainings in, um, the M A S C meetings, this has been part of those trainings and, you know, um. You know, the, the general feeling was that we were elected to serve as the representatives of the town, and so. Um, she also had not, uh, spent a lot of time in this regulation, so, you know, that doesn't mean that now that we're aware of it. Absolutely, we're going to follow it to the letter, um, and not knowing, again, not an excuse, but, um, did want to be transparent, both with the public and with the school committee. Um, so any questions about that? Seeing none. Okay, we had no unanticipated items, but I would open for, for school committee comments.
Sean. Um, back to the Purple Star Award, congratulations first of all. Second of all, just, uh, thought it might be a good place to. Eliminate students who are intending to serve after they graduate, also, for a period of time. I don't, I don't know, we, we probably already do that in places, just might be another place to have that. Two, um, where are we at on the regional agreement?
Uh, that's something, yes, so, um, after, after the vote, whether it's the committee to accept. What was the amendment made on the floor of the, uh, town meeting, uh, held in Templeton in twenty-three? In the north, two, pardon me. Um, I, after that vote, I sent, um. The regional agreement, uh, with the amendment to the, uh, Phillipston Select Board and the now new town administrator. I did receive a notification back that it was received. And I would say that, eh, well, I, I'm being very candid and thankful that I received that communication back, uh, because I. In some things, I, you know, I don't know. So that was, that, where they're at, again, no, that thing weren't was, was closed, um. You know, before we were able to, you know, take the vote and do that. So, again, um, they now have another email from me and. They revoked draft reason agreement to consider, um, at their next town meeting.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
I just wanted to take a moment to recognize our school committee member, um, Ms. Heather Hensrup. Because she was a huge part of costumes for that production, and I certainly do not want to leave anyone out. There were a bunch of volunteers. But I wanted to recognize that in addition to all the time she spends here with us in school committee, she also spends a lot of time sewing. Generally, um, sewing, uh, beautiful costumes, but also complicated ones, because I can't even name the number of costumes that had electrical wiring or others. Features in them. Um, and so just wanted to take a moment to really thank her, because I know that there were a lot of sleepless nights. Um, not only, again, not excluding anyone, but did want to take a special moment, because, uh. It is, doing school committee is a lot of work, but doing school committee and yet another set of volunteer positions is, is huge, and so. Many thanks to you, as well as all of the parents and volunteers that helped to support that production.
Yeah, there was a great crew that came out to help, um, even all those, uh, fish scale costumes. We all came together on a Saturday. It was our first Saturday. We were all supposed to be off. Kids didn't have a super Saturday. But, um, the parents came in and helped us when we made those costumes to make it work. So they did a great job. They were.
Guys came when the lights worked.
Madam Chair, I was told it was seven hundred, and I hope I have this right, and if Ann was here, I believe, um, I don't know, but it was close to seven hundred tickets. Were sold by, that, and it was full Saturday.
The last night, or last night, last afternoon, the, the show had to be held, which, if you're our director, they do not hold your show. He had to hold it for half an hour to clear the lobby, because it took three of us, Mrs. Lyons at the computer, another parent volunteer, myself, to. Certain people who didn't buy their tickets in advance. We had to, we had to process. So, next year, folks, uh, should there be a wonderful production? Make sure you buy your tickets in advance, please. But Mr. Dixon was very gracious and helped the show for half an hour, which is unheard of. So, thank you. It really, I mean, I just can't say enough how impressive that show was. It was, it was just so much fun, and my kids really enjoyed it.
All right, um, on to subcommittee, I'm opening up my notes, because I, I have gone, uh. I have gone brain blind, I guess you could say. I am, I am trying to remember. So. We discuss, please update, sure, yes, um. A lot of winter to spring transitional activities were underway. Oh, a case of good news, the trash services bit is twelve percent lower than our current rate. That'll be a thirty thousand dollar savings over the next three years. Um, still a lot of movement around the roof project and, uh. Some confusion we're working to, working through at the moment, uh, with some, the, the, the bidder or the designer.
Designer, thank you.
The designer treating schools separately, even though O P M said they would treat them as one, and so there's just some confusion being worked out. Um. Amber, you already gave you updates on F twenty, F Y twenty-five and F Y twenty-six, so I will skip those. Did also, I know that there was a lot of discussion around federal grants, and we have received news that Title One monies for F Y twenty-six are. Safe and secure, is what we're hearing at this time, um, just since there's been some buzz around federal monies and what's happening, questions about what's happening there. Um, oh, the other update we had, uh, just to make, uh, the full committee aware, is I had a, a conversation. With the chair of the Winchendon School Committee round regionalization of services, not schools, I want to be clear. There's no discussion around regionalization of schools, because in order to do that, we would have to have an active and current regional agreement. However, you can still regionalize services, um, and they are interested in entering to that discussion. In order to make that discussion productive, we'd have to define what services we wish to potentially regionalize. And so, um, my suggestion would be that that be something we assign to the financing facilities, um. Sub, subcommittee as a project, um, for. The upcoming meetings, um, to determine where there may be some opportunity there, and then, of course, uh. We also expect, uh, potentially some input to come out of the working group that we know exists at Templeton. We have heard that that working group is extended to Phillipston, though not received any specific confirmation of that. Um, so, no promises, just exploration and exploration of potential cost savings is always an input. So that's financing facilities. Um, district operations outside of. The A D V A policy, any other things we should share? Um, I think the only thing would just be the, um.
Congratulate you on the amount of work you've been doing on, I'm, I'm back at you, on the handbook. Um, it's now down to, um. Jeff and I can to read through and add the, the latest update that Jen's made to it, so hopefully we can get this out in time. To the full committee for, uh, some interesting, uh, election results.
Yeah, so, yeah, hoping to have that available to folks, um, who make it through this election cycle, such that we have a handbook for members that. Offers some guiding points and also basically, or what training they need to complete. Offers some guiding points and also basically, or what training they need to complete, et cetera. Um, so other districts have this, and so we're looking forward to having this as well. Um. Labor Management Committee, we, we did meet with W E C recently, um, I would. Uh, you know, we can't go into specifics, but, um, what I can share is that. You know, again, relationship continues to be going very positively there, um, you know, lots of good. Good, open discussion about what needs are and, uh, what's happening within the district, uh, and so. You know, I think those W C meetings have gone a long way towards not just some of the positive momentum that was created in the last, um. Union negotiation with that group, um, but that we then continued that very positive momentum through those meetings by, you know, keeping in touch with one another and, and. You know, making sure that we're resolving the small stuff in the in-between, uh, stuff that isn't related to contracts. Uh, C P O, any updates received? P T O, that was on me to reach out, and I frankly forgot, but I will make sure that that gets done next month. Um, Student Advisory Council, Sean?
No.
Okay, and Legislative Representative?
I have a few, um. Federal One funding is, we, we will be level funded next year, but, uh. On the first, the Trump administration terminated a hundred and six million dollars in K through twelve educational funding for Massachusetts. Did not affect near against that regional school district, but it did impact some of the schools around us. So Fitchburg and Leinster and Worcester schools are dealing that. But as well, most of those monies were, um, being used to support the post pandemic needs, um, and so that's. That is definitely going to be felt in those school districts. Um. There's some new legislation being proposed, uh, one of them's pretty interesting, especially for us as a regional school district and. Uh, experiencing some significant increases in our transportation pricing, uh, in the last week, there was a bill introduced to eliminate predatory transportation pricing in school districts. So I'll keep an eye on that, if that goes anywhere. Um, and then I just a couple of interesting ones. There is a, another bill that was presented. Um, to establish an L G B T Q I A parent advisory council in the Commonwealth in school districts, which is, um. That sort of looks kind of like our C P O's, but for L G B T Q I A families. Um, and then there is another one with regard to school safety, um, and it was to establish a fund to be able to, to. Um, fund school resource officers in districts that. Would like to have a school resource or resource officer, but don't have the funds to do so.
Lots of thoughts going on. We have no correspondence this evening. Um, our next meeting is Thursday, May eighth at five thirty P M. And I did just wanna note that the meeting after that is May twenty-second, twenty twenty-five. Um, and as Dr. C, um, himself, has a senior this year, um, who has an event that evening. Um, Ms. Super Chi will actually lead that meeting in his place, um, or, you know, support me in leading that meeting, um. And so I just wanted to make folks aware of that, and that would be our first meeting following the election as well, so there is more business thing. Um, so we look forward, uh, to Ms. Super Chi sitting up at the table with us that evening. She cannot sit back there. We do need executive session tonight, um. So, and we will not return to open session following. Um, so I would entertain a motion to enter into executive session as per Mass General Law Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one A, but reason number three, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair, so do theirs. The meeting will not return to open session immediately following. So. Motion by Heather and second by Sean. Yeah, roll call vote, uh, Sean.
Aye.
Chrissy. Danielle.
Hi.
Heather.
Hi.
And I say yes, so that is unanimous, and again, we will not return to open session. Thank you so much, your lady.